Okay, so we are back to the regular meeting. Am I unmuted here? I am. So, Madam City Clerk, can you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Sinks?
Here.
Councilmember Willie? Vice Mayor Paul?
Here.
Mayor Sharp?
Here. Okay. So, my first order of business now, I want to give a closed session report for the closed session held on Friday, May 15th. This was conference with legal counsel pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9d1 regarding pending litigation Valco Property Owner LLC versus City of Cupertino, Santa Clara County Superior Court, case number 19CV355457, 2019 Valco General Plan and Zoning Amendments. Counsel discussed with legal counsel this pending litigation, for which discussion in open session would prejudice the city in the litigation. No reportable action was taken. Councilmember Chow did not attend the discussion because she has recused herself from this litigation out of abundance, out of an abundance of caution due to the proximity of her home to the property line of the Valco site. Thank you. Now, do we have any ceremonial matters? We do not. Okay. Oh, back. Now, we... Madam City Clerk, any postponements?
No postponements, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then we are on to oral communications. Do we have anyone that... Let me go to our participants and attendees. We have 26 attendees. I see three people with their hand raised. For oral, you each get three minutes. First, we will go to Peggy Griffin. Okay, Peggy, I think you are unmuted. Okay.
Can you... Kirsten, could you put up my slide, please? The first page? Okay. My discussion is regard to the Oaks Westport project. At the upcoming June 2nd City Council meeting, the City Council will consider giving up height, double the maximum height, setbacks decreased up to half, and distribution of BMR, all consolidated into buildings. In exchange for this, the project will have ground floor retail, all senior rental housing in two buildings, 48 BMR units, and amenities in two buildings, Building 1 and 2. And as you can see on this list, there's a significant difference between the amenities in 1 and Building 2. All residents in both buildings should have equal access to all amenities. And then there's 88 for sale townhouses and row houses. Next page, please. Please protect all the residents' rights, the city's and the public's best interests now and in the future by preventing bonus density double dipping on the second parcel, place deed restrictions on both parcels, recorded, and make sure that they're recorded prior to issuing any construction document. It's too late if you wait till occupancy. Establish a legal way to enforce and penalize noncompliance regardless of change in ownership or management. This will protect the people, all of us, now and also in the future as more people come to our city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we are on to... Hold on, my... This just changed. Attendees. Eric Linsckog, welcome, Eric.
Members, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. A resident of Cupertino. I would like to speak on behalf of, you know, maybe some of the businesses and people in our city who may be suffering more than some of us other from this shelter-in-place situation we have. And I'm thinking of all the, mainly about all the restaurants. I think it's time we do something, you know, to help them out, maybe not immediately now, but when we open up. And what I'm thinking of is, we need to provide more outdoor seating areas so that they can serve, you know, more customers, but still will buy to the distances. So I propose we close down, or we propose that they make seating areas in their parking lots and that we close down lanes on adjacent streets to provide a replacement parking. I would, you know, for example, you close down Main Street and you can provide parking on Stevens Creek. I would take a lane on Stevens Creek and the answer all the way and to use for either replacement parking or outer seating as needed at each place. And I think that would be useful for our economy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Welcome, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. You have three minutes.
Okay, good. Hi, this is Jennifer Griffin. I'll just make a quick comment since Peggy brought up the Oaks and Westport. I did attend that meeting and I went over and I looked at the Oaks that are actually on the property. A lot of them were planted at City Council's direction in about 2010, especially the 15 that are along the 85 perimeter. I haven't looked at the Arborist report particularly to see what they're taking out, but it looks like a lot of those Oaks are supposed to go out. And we really need to go back and look at the 2010 City Council meetings when those Oaks were replanted on the property. I do intend to pursue that. On this, the other note, I was going to talk about the SB 902, which is Scott Weiner's new SB 50, and then SB 899, which is a particularly shameful housing bill that Senator Weiner has come up with where churches can build four-story housing units without telling the neighbors of their, on their property. I see no reason for churches to behave this way. It's counterproductive and I can't imagine anyone writing a bill that would propose something like this to be a bad neighbor. Then again, with these housing bills, especially 50, this is the fourth iteration, the public isn't stupid. We're beginning to wonder and question what the motivation is for these housing bills over and over again. I, you know, we draw conclusions. Something has happened in the last five to four years, which means that a lot of our senators spend a lot of their time writing bills that are offensive to the general public. They hate cities and they hate the local residents that live in the cities. They want to take away residents' rights to determine self-determination and make them feel like they should be shameful to live in their cities on their property. I'm sorry, this is the way these bills are being written. I am very sure that there are special interest money being pumped into the backing of these bills. They're almost like write it to my order and we need to have a full investigation into why this is happening. But it is basically a land grab. We have unelected people. This is evidenced by CASA. A lot of those people are not elected in any capacity and then the ones that are elected, they're not in the elected jurisdiction of other cities. So it's a land grab and it's a rights grab and I'm really tired of these people saying that they have by right to make, to grab land that belongs to other people and other cities. I think we need to have an investigation because with SB 50 resurfacing again for the fourth time, it's obvious there is something very, very bad going on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. And the last hand I see raised is Mooney. Welcome, Mooney.
Could you hear me now?
We hear you now.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Moody Mahdi Patla and I'm a resident of Cupertino. I'm here representing myself only. With the recent decision by Judge Williams on Valco SB 35 lawsuit, I realize that city staff and city manager have discretion and authority to approve even a noncompliant project. It may sound ridiculous, but that's the truth. Even if they don't approve the project, just mere lapse of time constitutes automatic approval. I can't imagine, you know, our elected officials in Sacramento passing such laws that you would only see in banana republics. I wasn't expecting to see it in a place like California. Unfortunate. I sent an R chart for, as an attachment to my mail, so I don't know if somebody can pull it up. City Clerk, can you pull up the R chart that I sent?
He's working on it, Mooney.
Pause the timer until it comes up.
Yeah, sorry. You sent it for...
Last night, I sent a mail and there is an attachment. It's there in your document as well, budget document, page 6, Eric.
Okay, let's see. Hmm, I'm not seeing it. If you sent it last night, it would have been added to the written communications on the website. I don't, I don't see it. I apologize.
Okay, no worries. So, I'm sure that R chart is a public information. It's there in the document, budget document as well. So as for the R chart, right, citizens of Cupertino are the ultimate boss for the city government. The entire city staff reports to city manager. Yeah, exactly. So if you look at this chart...
I'm sure it is.
Thank you. So citizens of Cupertino is on the top of the food chain, then city council, then city manager, and the entire city staff, right? So the city staff reports to the city manager, who reports to the city council, who reports to the residents, right? It's important to understand that food chain. The community did a very good job of electing residence-centric council. With banana republic laws like SB 35, the authority has been subverted from elected officials to bureaucrats. I request that city council and the city manager hold an all-ends-type meeting with all of city staff to remind them who they are serving, that is residents, not special interests, not lobbyists. Every decision they make using their discretion and authority should be keeping the residents' interest on top. So I would really appreciate, you know, if you can do that kind of an all-ends meeting with entire city staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mooney. Let me check if there was any other participants that wish to speak. One second.
There's one, Mr. Mayor, Uma Krishnan.
Okay, yeah, I see. Welcome, Uma.
Let me unmute.
Okay.
Okay. Hi, so my question is about the survey and I see that, you know, we have a pretty generous budget for IT and given what the previous resident spoke, you know, Mooney, so we want to make sure that the citizens have a voice and it is accurately recorded. So we want, so I would, I propose that you have some sort of an application app or something like that where the survey goes out to the residents of Cupertino instead of it, the survey being passed on to anybody, forwarded to people who are not a resident. And I was kind of surprised how, you know, the survey that was deployed last week or the couple of weeks ago was so loose and loose in its wordings and furthermore, you know, you could just forward it to anybody and there was no way to authenticate that the survey indeed went to the resident. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I see no other hands raised, so we can move on to the next item. Scroll up here is reports by council and staff. So how about our COVID-19 update? Deb?
Sure, I'll start with a little bit of an update with the new order that we got yesterday. I'll do it backwards. I also emailed this part to the council, but I also wanted to get it out into the public that under Governor Newsom's executive order issued on March 4th, any local emergency proclaimed will remain in effect until each local governing authority terminates its respective local emergency. Accordingly, there is no need for the council to take any action for the local emergency declaration to continue. I believe you adopted this by resolution on March 17th and at that time we had talked about it being, having to renew it every 60 days, but that's not true given the governor's order. But rest assured that I will bring it back to council when conditions have improved such that it warrants consideration of terminating the local emergency. With the new county order that we received yesterday from the public health officer of the county, this new county will go into effect as of May 22nd, 2020, which is Monday. It gave us enough time to try and adapt a little bit. It opens up curbside retail and any logistics and manufacturing to support retail. I was a little bewildered by this because I had seen some things about curbside retail before that I thought it was continuing, but now it's official, I suppose. Car parades are now allowed. Now, this is definitely a change. This speaks to a number of calls that I received probably early last week or the week before regarding, you know, graduation recognition and doing car parades for those kinds of things. And so I'm sure I'm going to be talking to the school district about that. Outside gardens, places where you can go and walk and it's like Faloli Gardens up in, I guess it's Pacifica or close to Half Moon Bay, I forget which town it is, but open gardens are able to operate now. And all businesses that are getting ready to reopen and/or are open, we have posted to our website the information sheet on compliance and the signage that is now required by the county for each of the compliant businesses to put in their windows, put in their businesses so they can see that they're compliant to a lot of the requirements of the county order. In the meantime, staff and I are working furiously on a couple of things. One is being able ourselves as the city to reopen by the time the next shelter-in-place order date comes. I won't say if I can see that it's going to get extended or not, or if it's going to terminate that day. I doubt it. Certainly we'll have more relaxation requirements there. And then lastly, we are working on plans to help businesses, in particular small businesses, reopen quickly and being able to do exactly what I think Mr. Linsckog was talking about. For example, restaurants, how do we expand their floor space so they can get the same volume but expand it to the outside? And what can, what can the city do to help with that? And we will be working all those plans with our businesses as well. Thank you.
All right. Is that everything for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now we are on to the exciting stuff, our annual pavement report. I assume it's Roger. Are you there? Oh, there we go. Okay.
You wouldn't get anyone else for this, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. This is Roger Lee, your Director of Public Works. Each year I look forward to presenting to you and to the community this annual pavement report. As the street network is one of the most valued assets maintained by the city, this council and council's prior have made preservation of this asset a high priority. It is my pleasure to report that our street network is in very good shape and for the public, very good shape is measured by our pavement condition index or PCI. Next slide, please. As shown on this first slide, our street network currently has a PCI of 85 and I will get into more detail on what PCI values mean in a couple more slides. What is good to know here, though, is that our network is tied for number one in the nine Bay Area counties that include well over 100 agencies. Aside from the lower costs that are incurred in having a well-maintained network, a PCI greater than...
We can surely push this out. I'll try to mute, I'll try to mute that person. I don't know why they're not muted. Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. A PCI greater than 70 or greater than 80 for other funding sources also provides flexibility in that council may direct street-related costs to be funded related to how they get funded in the future. Before getting into these details, this next slide shows a graph of our pavement condition over the last 10 years. Next slide. All right, so this slide shows how effective the several years of past funding have been to improve our network. And the next slide, slide covers PCI ranges and what percentage of our network are within each range. As you can see here on that right column, 81% of our network is in the very good category and only minor percentages are in the fair to poor categories. Each year, pavement improvement programs go after these streets in worse conditions first and as our network degrades about two PCI points each year, there's usually only a few streets in the lower categories at any one time. So similar to this slide, the next slide shows the PCI by street type. Next slide, please. So as shown here is our network divided into arterial collector and residential streets and examples of arterial streets include, say, Stevens Creek and Deansa Boulevard's. Collector Streets would be Stelling and Blaney. And what's nice about this distribution is that our highly-traffic streets are in very good condition. Now, I mentioned that having a PCI greater than 80 allows more flexibility in funding and this next slide illustrates this. So next slide. So to be eligible for SB 1 funds and Measure B funds, an agency needs to maintain a maintenance of effort that is equal to the average general fund expenditure for the fiscal years that are shown here. With our value, with our PCI value at 85, we have flexibility in what type of streets, street-related projects we are eligible for. And this is shown on the next slide. So what this slide shows is what we are recommending for asphalt projects that are already funded this current fiscal year and what we'll be proposing for next fiscal year. And the goal of these recommendations is to meet the required maintenance of effort to maintain the eligibility and to either defer or reduce general fund expenditures due to the economic uncertainties that have been created by COVID. Now, I won't get into the details of this slide at this time, but I do want to show you how the PCI will be funded, will be with this funding. So if we implement these recommendations, what this next slide is going to show you is what our PCI is projected to be over the next several years. And this slide, it ties back to some of the things that were mentioned in the study session and how we're reducing some of our operating expenses and it will be reducing what we're proposing for next year. So the next slide, please. And so what this shows is what our PCI would be, you know, roughly we will maintain at that middle level. We're not proposing doing nothing. We'll do just enough to keep our maintenance of effort and so it would be in the middle there. And so, you know, if we were to continue to do just a nominal amount, we would still are projected to end in 2024, which is, you know, four years out, still having a PCI of 83 compared to where we are at 85. And our performance goal is to have a PCI above 82 for our network because it's really, that's a sweet spot for where you're spending an ideal amount of money for preventative maintenance and you're foregoing the more expensive treatments of rehabilitation. So I wanted to end this presentation by showing off a couple of streets that have been recently resurfaced. So I'll do that in the next couple of slides. Perhaps someone's watching lives on these streets. This is Portel Elmhurst Drive, just sort of nice before and after photos of what asphalt dollars do. And then the next slide before any questions you may have, this is Creston Drive. So, you know, these are streets. You can see some of the distresses there on the left and why we would be working on those streets first and how it looks on the right. You know, so needless to say, I'm very proud of our street networks and very good choices have been made. And with that, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Oh, so Roger, the slide where you showed the Collector Streets having a rather low PCI in the bar chart, can you go back to that? And there were no numbers over those.
Yeah, they were, they're still...
Yeah, there. So why are there no numbers over the purple?
I think that's just a, there's no reason not. You can just look to the...
Right, I just wonder why the Collector Roads are always lower than the arterials and residential's.
Well, we did make a concerted effort several years ago to get after the arterial streets just because of the amount of traffic and they do tend to fail quicker than the other streets. So we did, we did go after and do all the rubber asphalt work on Deansa. You know, pretty much every arterial street is pretty well done now. But yeah, we're, for the Collector, you know, we're definitely including those in our pavement programs in the past and going forward, Mayor.
Okay, yeah, that's the only question I had. Was there, were there any council members that wish to...
Mr. Mayor, we do have one speaker.
Oh, from the public? Okay.
Lisa Warren, and I will allow her to...
Oh, I see two now, Eric and Lisa. Lisa, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so thank you, Roger. I just have a question. I couldn't help but notice that on Tantow and some streets off of it, there has been painted blinds for a while and now there's been, the USA has come out and I believe, or I've been told, that it's a water company that's actually going to be tearing up part of Tantow and other streets connected, the courts, et cetera. And I, you know, if they need to do that, they need to do that, but I just want to request that because you have done such a great job with the streets, that you really stay on top of them to patch them properly because in neighboring cities, when streets are torn up for those purposes by other entities, they never get appropriate, oh, I shouldn't say never, often are not appropriately brought back to the way they were. And so I'm asking that Public Works really be on them and enforce that they be what they should be when they're finished with their work.
I'm sorry. I appreciate that, Lisa. We coordinate with all the utilities twice a year and they know what projects we have going forward. So, because there's nothing worse than having a nice black street that then becomes, you know, all cut up. And we do have a three-year street cut moratorium where only during emergencies are they even allowed to start cutting into the street. And we do have some pretty restrictive replacement requirements, but I do appreciate your mention on that.
All right, next we have Eric. Eric, are you there?
Now, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Yes, sorry. Yes, I'd also like to thank, say thank you to Roger for keeping our streets in good condition and trying to save some money here. And not the least being a cyclist, certainly appreciate that Cupertino has excellent streets, much better than most of our neighboring cities. Though I wonder at, you know, in this time of crisis where we, you know, need to consider where we spend our money and where car traffic is likely to be reduced for some time to come, many of us are still going to continue to work from home even after the economy opens up. So I will consider cutting it even a bit more, you know, spending the absolute bare minimum to keep us at that level 80 and, you know, save that money for other projects. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Okay, would any council members like to comment? I don't see any hands raised. Good, because we're way behind. Next, we are on to report on committee assignments. Who would like... Who would like to go first here? How about Rod?
I would be delighted to do that, Mayor. Thank you. I want to report on Silicon Valley Clean Energy's program. So at the April board meeting, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Board of Directors approved $10 million in funding for customer relief and community resilience. At our most recent meeting on the thirteenth of May, we added $2 million more in contingency because some of our programs could be oversubscribed. So the way that's going to break down is a hundred-dollar bill credit applied directly to over twenty-four thousand residential customers who are on the low-income CARE and FARA programs. We will also give a bill credit based on application for up to four thousand qualifying small business customers. That's up to $250. That's an application process. But the, the bar is low. For workforce relief, we're looking at $1.5 million to provide immediate financial relief. For contractors and folks who, you know, create our electrical systems and build them in our, in our, in our communities, also expand awareness of electrification technology through training. So these would be heat pumps, induction, heat pumps and various other electricity appliances, you know, consistent with our new reach codes. We also very notably have set aside half of the money, $5 million, to member agencies. That would be cities, including the city of Cupertino, to provide project support to increase resilience in those communities to deal with PSP events. So I talked about this a little before under the budget. I think if we can come up with a project, these competitive funds could be used to help us make a city facility impervious to power shut-offs. I note our city hall, for example, can't service its full load with the diesel generator we have. And so we're impaired there. There could be other projects. I'm not going to pick. I wanted to make this aware, this information aware, awares to you all. The credit for the residential care and fare customers in our city looks to be around, based on the number of customers, we have around $101,000 for small commercial customers, a relief of about 64,000. Resilience projects totaling 218,000 and resilience planning, that is designing the projects, 44,000. So I'm, as I said during the budget hearing, I hope the city of Cupertino can take advantage of these funds this year. We are maintaining four percent discount to PG&E with our rates. And we, at the meeting, approved a new fifty-megawatt solar and storage contract with Next Era Energy for energy that will serve about four percent of our load once it's built. So this is an all-new facility that, you know, will, will service our load once built in a couple of years. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. How about Darcy?
VTA Policy Advisory Committee met on May fourteenth to discuss several items, including the draft Bay Area Fiscally Constrained Project List, which decreased the number of projects submitted. And the overall total of the cost of that list went from about $30 billion to $23 billion. We also received a fiscal impact report of COVID upon VTA operations. Suffice it to say, the fiscal impact has been profound. VTA has received $122.8 million of Federal CARES Act funding and $34.3 million of that will be used to cover this fiscal year's shortfall. Similar to Cupertino, VTA operates on a fiscal year from July first to June thirtieth. And so the remainder of that Federal CARES Act funding for VTA, or $88.5 million, are being proposed to allocate for next year's projected deficit. However, the total of next year's deficit projected for VTA in their worst-case scenario, as things stand at the moment, is approximately $155 million. The remainder of the deficit in this worst-case scenario is projected to come from VTA's rainy day fund, which is sufficient to cover this $66.5 million differential. But it will leave that rainy day fund with very little remaining. Another item of note was the ten-year priority project list for the 2016 Measure B Bicycle and Pedestrian Program Competitive Grant Funds. Cupertino fared relatively well in that process. We are getting approximately $6 million for two projects, the two Huna Paracera Trail portions is another portion of a little bit more than a million dollars that is going towards the Homestead Roads Safe Routes to School Act. I'm sorry, not act, but the program improvements that is being ushered in by VTA. Although some of those improvements will, of course, be on Cupertino streets. Thanks.
Okay, John, do you have anything?
None of my primary commissions met, but I did attend the one that Rod attended, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and that was great to see.
All right, great. Councilmember Chow.
No, I don't have anything to report.
Okay, so I attended the city's associations' meetings. Interesting, we did come out with a anti-xenophobia resolution, which you can read on their website to talk about the anti-Asian xenophobia as a result of COVID-19. That passed unanimously, of course. We had our legislative agenda. We took a position on AB 1279. This is a Bloom bill and the position was opposed. There was some discussion, should we do oppose unless amended? But we decided that the bill was just so terrible that we would just take an opposed position. That passed with San Jose abstaining and Palo Alto voting no. All the other cities voted to oppose the bill. Let me see if there's anything else. I think that's, yeah, that's all for my assignments. Okay, so we are, let me go back to the agenda. We are on to the consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, there was an item that you mentioned to me that needed to be pulled, but now I don't remember what that was.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that was item nineteen, the third quarter report, third quarter financial report.
Oh, item nineteen, okay. So does any member of the council wish to pull any other item from consent before we have a motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt consent calendar.
I will second your motion with specific thanks to staff with regard to item number ten, because I had requested a letter to be signed by yourself, Mr. Mayor, to the Small Business Administration to make sure that some of these funds that are released go in a more appropriate manner to the small business community and to make sure that we have viability to people that are in need of some help, such as the smaller landlords, so that they can transfer that amount of help over to their tenants. So thank you very much.
Great, so I guess I made the motion to adopt consent, other than item nineteen. Darcy seconded. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Chow.
Well, yes.
Councilmember Sinks.
Yes.
Councilmember Willie.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Sharp.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, so now let's have number nineteen, the third quarter financial report. Who's presenting that?
Evening, Mayor Sharp. This is Zach Korach. I'll be presenting the third quarter financial report.
Okay. Are you sharing your screen?
Yes.
All right, great.
Just to confirm, can everybody see the title page for third quarter?
Ah, I think so, yes.
Great. Okay, I have condensed this presentation significantly just due to time constraints on, on this evening's agenda. And I'm jumping straight into the recommended adjustment. Originally, staff had intended on this being an action item, but it was, it did end up on consent. However, with the, the proposed budget modification of the $10 million transfer from the Capital Reserve to the General Fund, staff wanted to make sure that council had this brought to their attention and were given the opportunity to explicitly approve it. So with that, this is a look at, at that exact transfer, $10 million from the Capital Reserve back to the General Fund. And as a reminder, as part of the mid-year financial report that was provided to council during the month of March of earlier this calendar year, the General Fund transferred over $20 million of excess fund balance from the General Fund to the Capital Reserve. And due to the impacts immediately following the mid-year report of COVID-19, staff are recommending to, to retain more control and discretion over those funds and transfer it back to the General Fund for the, for the immediate future. Excuse me, this might jump into one too many slides here. So again, straight to the recommendation to accept the city manager's third quarter report and adopt a draft resolution approving the budget adjustment. As for the next steps, of course, we completed the proposed budget study session earlier this evening. And although the first quarter report is slated to be brought before council during the month of November 2020, as we've discussed multiple times this evening, we will most definitely be bringing COVID-19 fiscal updates before city council as necessary and applicable and as information becomes more available to city staff. So with that, I'm available for questions regarding, regarding this item.
Okay, wonderful. Do any of the council members wish to speak on this?
I have a question. So this is third quarter report that ends at the end of March, right?
That is correct.
That means it's the beginning of COVID, since the shutdown starts on sixteenth of March. So I'm just wondering, um, is it appropriate to do the fund balance transfer in this third quarter report since it hasn't happened yet? It happened in the next quarter, right, the budget shortfall?
The, well, COVID-19 impact did commence in, in March of 2020, which was the last month of, of third quarter. To your point, we really are not experiencing significant financial impacts due to COVID-19 during that month.
Yeah.
Right.
So this transfer should, it's actually for the last quarter?
For the last two weeks of, of March.
Yeah, but the $10 million is really needed for the last quarter of-
That's true, and it's possible. Even, even beyond the fourth quarter, though, it is, it is for the primary purpose of positioning the General Fund to absorb any ongoing impacts of COVID-19 into fiscal year 2021. And if any of those revenue shortfalls that were presented as part of the proposed budget study session were to fall short, even, even beyond where city staff are currently estimating them to be, that $10 million is anticipated to be used to absorb those potential shortfalls. And if you recall, the $17.5 million in beginning unassigned fund balance in the General Fund, that $17.5 million assumes that the $10 million is transferred over. Now, whether that happens as of March thirty-first, 2020, or if it happens prior to July first of 2020, the timing of that transfer is effectively irrelevant, so to speak. But the plan still remains the same and the need remains the same in that the $10 million will be used for fiscal year, for the last quarter of fiscal year 1920 and for fiscal year 2021 and onward.
Okay, so these are because of the loss of revenue, expected revenue from, from this quarter up to probably end of June. So far, that's $10 million.
Correct.
Okay.
So just a brief question, you know, the, the transfer is coming from Capital Projects Fund going to the General Fund. Can understand the General Fund. Maybe you could just give a little bit of an understanding about this Capital Projects Fund. I would otherwise kind of think of it as a fund intended for capital projects. And if the money was there and now being transferred back to the General Fund, was it intended or not needed? Now it's back in the General Fund. Just a brief understanding of that. Capital Projects Fund has differentiated from the General Fund.
Sure, the Capital Projects Fund is a, a separate fund, a separate location where the city's capital projects reside. And as part of the city's one-time fund balance use policy, any excesses in General Fund fund balance in a respective fiscal year are recommended to be transferred over to the Capital Reserve to be used to fund future capital projects. There obviously is a significant need to, to fund future capital projects, namely the various building conditions assessment and the facility needs citywide. That represents a very significant need from a financial standpoint. But given COVID-19, and again, the level of uncertainty on both the, the extent of the impacts and the magnitude of the impacts, staff are finding it most financially prudent to ensure that before the, the full $20 million that was transferred from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund as part of mid-year, that, that half of that amount, the $10 million, be transferred back should any impacts exceed any of the current expectations at this point. So it's not to say that there aren't capital financing needs and capital project funding needs within the city. It's that, given the high level of uncertainty and from a prioritization standpoint, that in order to provide council the most discretion over the city's dollars, before those dollars get programmed for future capital projects, to, to be able to have those dollars reside or be transferred back into the General Fund to make a decision, once the, the additional information becomes available later down the road, whether that's one month or six months down the road, provides an advantage for the city.
Sounds great. I mean, a real good definition there. So it just kind of prompts a, an additional question. So the money was transferred to Capital Projects intending that in a non, in a non-COVID-19 scenario, tho, those funds then would have gone and now here, if you can kind of give a couple of examples, would have gone for maybe the earthquake retrofit at the sports center, earthquake retrofit at city hall and may, I, I'm just pulling those out of the air, thinking those are the most likely and that now those things might be pushed out to give us the greater flexibility for the unknown.
That's absolutely correct.
That is great.
Great, thank you.
Another way to say it, to not belabor it too much, is we were going to, pre-COVID, we were going to transfer $20 million from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund and we, COVID changed our minds, be a little more conservative and leave $10 million back in the General Fund.
Okay, great.
Was I, maybe just, was I correct that most likely that would have gone for the earthquake retrofits at Sports Center and City Hall? Or those were not on the slate in that calendar year?
Uh, unless Roger is on.
We're gonna be making a presentation on June 2nd on the projects that will be recommending to go forward, and that's, and that's knowing that this transfer is has occurred. The Sports Center, because it is a safety issue, we are not recommending that that project be deferred. We would go forward. The City Hall design or retrofit, that had never been authorized. That's, that's not, that is not on the list of projects.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members wish to speak? I don't have anything. Okay, seeing nothing, we can go back to the agenda and entertain a motion for item 19 that was pulled from consent.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-054 to accept the city investment policy. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Adopt the budget modification 1920-081 for the third quarter adjustments as described in the third quarter financial report and adopt a Resolution 20-053 approving third quarter budget adjustments for the staff report. And to accept the city manager's third quarter financial reporting for 2019 and 20.
I'll second that.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember C?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Chow? Councilmember, okay.
Hello?
Hello, aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Scharf?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. So we are now on to, let's go back here. Sorry, I don't have two screens up here, so it's I believe we are on to the study session, item 22. Study session of Plan Bay Area 2050 and RENA, including impact of jobs housing balance and jobs housing fit to RENA. Okay, welcome for, let's have the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay? This is Ben Food Director, Community Development. City Council, with this item, we are proposing to have
Uh oh.
We're not hearing you. Oh, he's gone.
He froze.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Yeah, you keep going in and out. Okay.
Sorry about that. Let me try this one more time. Ben Food Director, Community Development. With this item, we are seeking your input and direction for the Plan Bay Area 2050 as well as the RENA allocation. As you know, these are pretty important topics. With us, we have with us, we have Erica Poveta and Pew Gosh to present. These two items are separate, but yet related to each other. Erica and I believe will present the Plan Bay Area 2050 with a brief description and the status. And then Pew will take it over for the regional housing needs allocation piece. So with that, I will hand it over to Erica and Pew.
Thanks, Ben. So I will share my screen so that everyone can see the PowerPoint. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Erica Poveta, Associate Planner with Community Development Department. And I'll be giving a brief overview of Plan Bay Area for that portion of tonight's study session, followed by the presentation on the regional housing needs allocation. With the passage of Senate Bill 375, regions are required to adopt a sustainable community strategy as part of the regional transportation plan. Under state law, the plans must meet greenhouse gas emission reduction targets and demonstrate that the region can accommodate future projected household growth. Plan Bay Area is a long-range plan that serves as the Bay Area's regional transportation plan and the sustainable community strategy. The plan focuses on four key issues: the environment, the economy, housing, and transportation. The first Plan Bay Area 2040 was adopted in 2013 and was later updated in 2017. Preparation of Plan Bay Area 2050 is currently underway by the Association of Bay Area Governments, or ABAG, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for our region, and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC, which is our regional transportation agency. ABAG was formed by local government leaders in 1961 in response to state legislation. The organization is the regional planning agency for the Bay Area's nine counties, and their work is focused on housing, transportation, economic development, and environment. As mentioned, ABAG is working on, working with MTC on Plan Bay Area 2050. And it also acts as the Bay Area's Council of Governments for the regional housing needs allocation process. MTC was created by state legislator in 1970 and is the Bay Area's transportation planning, financing, and coordinating agency. While the two agencies have different focuses, they are in the process of consolidating and share joint responsibility for Plan Bay Area, with a single staff serving both the ABAG Executive Board and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Leading up to the current work towards Plan Bay Area 2050, ABAG and MTC conducted a public outreach process called the Horizon Initiative between 2018 and 2019. Through this process, possible strategies to address regional transportation, housing, economic, and environmental issues through 2050 were stress-tested using regional land use and economic computer modeling. MTC and ABAG are currently working on creating the Plan Bay Area Blueprint. The blueprint is a crucial process towards the Plan Bay Area 2050 that will analyze proposed growth geographies and growth strategies for the region. The draft blueprint is expected to be released in July for further public comment and feedback before the final blueprint is released in December. The final Plan Bay Area 2050 will ultimately build on the previous plan, the findings and strategies from the Horizon process, and the blueprint analysis. The two main components of Plan Bay Area will be the growth geographies and the growth strategies. And together, these are intended to answer the questions of where and how do we grow as a region. The initial growth geographies considered for the plan consisted of priority development areas, PDAs, priority production areas, PPAs, and priority conservation areas, PCAs. However, MTC and ABAG found through computer modeling and analysis in the Horizon process that the initial list of locally nominated PDAs and PPAs alone would not be sufficient to meet the state's sustainability or equity goals. In response, the ABAG Executive Board and MTC approved an expanded growth geography for the blueprint analysis. In addition to the previously approved PDAs and PPAs, the expanded growth geography also includes transit-rich areas and high resource areas. It's important to note that the expanded growth geographies only apply to jurisdictions that have nominated less than 50% of their PDA eligible areas. In February, the ABAG Executive Board and MTC also approved 25 growth strategies to be analyzed during the blueprint process. The growth strategies are organized into one of nine larger themes relating to transportation, environment, economy, and housing. The following figure indicates the proposed geography for the city. Cupertino responded to MTC's and ABAG's initial call for a letter, for the letter of interest by committing to keeping the existing 554-acre PDA in the city along Stevens Creek and North Deanso. The area is shown in maroon. Given that the city has nominated less than 50% of our 2,783 PDA eligible acres, the city's growth geographies to be studied in the blueprint analysis have been expanded to also include the TRAs shown in teal along Stevens Creek Boulevard and along Miller Avenue between Bollinger and 280. We have also been slated to include the HRAs shown in light blue along North Wolf Road and Bollinger. And it's important to note that these added growth geographies can still be amended. MTC and ABAG have opened up a second call for letters of interest from jurisdictions who wish to add or modify PDAs. If the jurisdictions nominate at least 50% of their PDA eligible areas, MTC and ABAG would then use those areas for analysis. And the second call for letters will close on May 31st. So now I will turn it over to Planning Manager Pew Gosh to discuss the regional housing needs allocation.
Can I ask one quick question? So we see Bollinger there, and south of Bollinger is San Jose. This kind of makes it appear like, you know, it's part of Cupertino, and so it's something that we have jurisdiction over. But like I say, that's San Jose.
Exactly. So the growth, the growth geographies are jurisdiction-specific. However, given the map, it does indicate that there is a sphere of influence. But we will be looking only at Cupertino's growth geographies. Unfortunately, this is the only map. It's not the best quality, so I apologize for that. But we are specifically, specifically looking at Cupertino's growth geographies.
Do you have, you said that the current PDA is 556 acres. Do you have the acreage for the TRA and HRA that are identified or proposed in that map? What's the total for Cupertino?
I don't believe, Pew, unless you have this information, I don't believe that we have the total acreage of the PDAs, TRAs, and HRAs, but we can look into that.
That's right. We don't, we haven't calculated those acreages, but we're happy to look into that. Currently, the quality of the map that we have is not the best. This is the map that we were provided by ABAG and MTC. So this is, like we said, not the best that we can work with, but we can figure, get some estimates on that. Just moving on to the next portion of this item, which is the regional housing needs allocation. The process starts with the regional housing needs determination, which is done by the Department of Housing and Community Development, which basically goes through and figures out what the housing need is by region for the 18 Council of Governments that the state has. And they have been doing that for the sixth cycle in Southern California, and now they have, they've slowly moved on to Northern California, and they're working on determining what the housing need is for the ABAG region. This is provided to the councils of government, which will be given to ABAG, and then ABAG has to determine how they're going to distribute it locally to each of the local jurisdictions. There are 109 jurisdictions that feed into the ABAG Council of Governments.
Pew, so I don't know if you're gonna talk about this a little bit later, but can you talk a little bit more about the other 18 ABAG-like agencies around the the state and kind of do they do the similar things and, you know, regions, et cetera?
Yes, certainly. So there are, as I mentioned, there are 18 regions, and every region has a Council of Governments and a Metropolitan Planning Organization and a Regional Transportation Agency. They all have that. Many, in many regions, the Metropolitan Planning Organization is the same as the Regional Transportation Authority. So in our case, we have ABAG and we have MTC. In several other regions, that is one, the same entity. And so they basically perform the same functions, which is they do long-range planning, the Regional Transportation Authority does the transportation planning. And for a very long time, they kind of operated in their own worlds, and they did not need to be coordinated until the adoption of SB 375, which necessitated that the two organizations, where they are different, coordinate their activities. And as a result, we have to have the long-range plan, in our case, Plan Bay Area, and the regional transportation plan, which is required by the federal government, to kind of work at the same time and be coordinated. And that's why this is becoming more and more necessary, it necessitates cities to look at land use and transportation together as one unit. So once, once the regional housing needs allocation is provided to the, I'm sorry, the regional housing needs determination is provided to ABAG, they have to go through a process of determining what the, how they're going to distribute that to the different jurisdictions that feed into that particular region. And that is where the local regional housing needs allocation is determined. And that's when cities have to update, jurisdictions have to update their housing element and also rezone properties to make sure that they can accommodate their regional allocation. This, the distribution methodology for this particular cycle is to determine that local RENA is currently under consideration by an entity called the Housing Methodology Committee. The Housing Methodology Committee, a methodology committee was created by ABAG as a way to public, publicize the process of determining the RENA. And this particular committee will make its recommendation to what is known as the Planning Committee for ABAG. And that particular committee will then come up with the final recommendations to the ABAG Executive Board that will make the final determination on the RENA. That methodology also has to be sent to ECD for its blessing. And once that is blessed by ECD, that's when all the local RENA will be provided to the different cities. Currently, the way the methodology is being broken down is into a kind of three primary components, which are, there's a baseline allocation, which will be given to every jurisdiction. And then there will be factor adjustments based on different factors, which I'll go into a little bit later. And then each of those factors are then going to be weighted differently depending on the priorities that the the Housing Methodology Committee and eventually ABAG places on each of those factors.
Before we go on, can you talk a little bit about the timeline we are looking at? There is a legal timeline. We and they have to adopt their location, and the city have to adopt our general plan.
Correct. Currently, I'm sorry, I'm jumping a few slides ahead, and then I'll go back to
No, it's okay if you already have it later.
Okay, all right. Well, we can go back to where I was then. I will, we'll certainly talk about that timeline. Absolutely. So just going through the factors, there were, there have been several factors that are being considered at the very early stages. The HMC looked at 13 different factors, and this was narrowed down based on polling and other input down to nine different factors. And there, what we wanted, and then in addition to that, ABAG and MTC came up with a tool, a web tool, GIS tool. The link is on the slide, which gives us a good, well, the best idea that we can have right now of how these factors impact different jurisdictions. As a baseline, they, they said that Southern California cities have been getting almost three to five times, up to five times their that past cycle RENA numbers as their current RENA. And so they're estimating, as in, ABAG is estimating that the housing need will be three times as much as it was in the fifth housing element cycle, which means it's going to be approximately 600,000 units that will have to be accommodated over an eight-year period within the 109 jurisdictions that feed into the ABAG region. So based on that, our baseline allocation for Cupertino is about 4,400 units. We wanted to do a little bit of sensitivity analysis to see how each of these factors that were being considered impact that baseline. And so this was as a result of weighting each of the factors individually at 100%. So we said if all, if they looked at nothing but the divergence index as being the only factor that impacted the final local RENA, how would it change Cupertino's RENA? how would it change Cupertino's Rina? And this table reflects that. Basically indicated that the factors that affected Cupertino's Rina the most were the divergence index, access to high opportunity areas, which are the HRAs, and then the jobs housing fit. And the factors that had the least amount of impact or negative impact to the baseline were jobs proximity to transit, future jobs growth, and then transit connectivity. So those were the factors that actually reduced our Rina. Moving on from that, another portion of the Rina is the actual distribution.
Could you just, I mean, that looked like a pretty important table. Could we just kind of, you know, try and understand that? So I heard you say you're forty-four thirteen units. So could you clarify? So that's your estimate on what you would have expected them to assign if they were assigning it today?
That's their estimate. This is all, these are all numbers from A Bag. So.
Ah, numbers from A Bag. Good. See, that's so.
These are just estimated numbers again. So I should clarify, estimated numbers from A Bag. These are not numbers that have been given to anybody yet. This is all still under consideration. Expectation by A Bag is that the regional need will be six hundred thousand. And what, the way that they distributed that, my understanding that this baseline allocation, this forty-four hundred number from a, what they said was a twenty-two percent increase over the number, the twenty nineteen households that in local jurisdictions. So across the board, across the entire region, they looked at how many households in every region. And they said, we're going to increase that by twenty-two percent to get to the six, six hundred thousand number. That, that represented about a six, two percent increase.
So I'm still wanting to understand, you know, numbers, I think, I think when we, we need to make decisions, whenever, whenever possible, we need to use numbers. And so I'm still trying to understand how the numbers in the table equate to the forty-four thirteen. If the forty-four thirteen was maybe some starting point, doesn't sound like it. So percent or the change numbers. So my next thought would be, well, let's sum up the column under change and the plus three, plus two, plus one, minus one, minus one, minus one. But I still don't get anywhere near the forty-four thirteen.
No, it's the starting point.
Oh, wait. So John, my understanding is, like Q said, for the entire region is six hundred sixty thousand units that's allocated. And then they divide that for each city based on our population in two thousand nineteen. So they evenly divide the units based on two thousand nineteen population and we got four thousand four, four thousand four hundred thirteen units. That's the baseline, right? And then just top it up and down.
Let me clarify this. So the six hundred thousand units that they're expecting region wide represents an approximately twenty-two percent increase over the twenty nineteen household count in the entire region. And in essence, this forty-four thirteen represents our share of that twenty-two percent increase region wide.
But the share is computed by our household number from two thousand nineteen?
Correct. So it's twenty percent. They're saying that the six hundred thousand over total Bay Area wide household units is twenty-two percent. And so they allocated a twenty-two percent increase to every group. That's the baseline in this case.
So basically, it is also about twenty-two percent more than our house, twenty-two percent of ours, who's on the nineteen household number.
Correct.
As the projected growth.
Yes.
For the next house.
That's the baseline allocation. That's at the baseline. And then how do each of those, how do each of these factors that are listed on this table impact the base?
Okay, so if they expect twenty-two percent growth in eight years, these units have to be approved and permitted in eight years. That's their expectation baseline.
At the baseline, yes. And then your, each of the factors will impact what the final number is. So you could either be higher than the baseline or lower than the baseline depending on other factors, such as social equity, proximity to jobs, jobs, housing fit, all these other factors will impact what the baseline is. It will either drive it up or down. So some.
So the factors we see on this chart will drive forty-four hundred thirteen up or down. And eventually we'll get the final number. I think your report says that we might be looking at five to six thousand units.
Correct. And I'm going to get into that a little later.
Okay, continue.
All factors that are under consideration, nothing has been determined yet, none, no, no weights have been assigned to this yet. This is just a sensitivity analysis to see which of the factors impacts the baseline most.
So what exactly is divergence index determined by?
I am, it's a complex factor. My understanding is there are definitions of each of these factors. And I'm going to have Erica look that up while I, I go through the presentation. We do have a couple of backup slides to kind of go over that, but Erica can certainly look that up.
We can answer that question after you're done, Q.
Census data.
Right, yeah. Right. When, when you're through with the presentation, you can answer that. Why don't we continue?
Yeah.
So another portion of the allocation, Rina allocation is not just the total number of Rina that a city gets, but also the breakdown by different income levels. There's, that is also based on several factors, including state law mandates, which are pertaining to social equity. And one of the driving factors, one of the things that I've been seeing a lot in several reports is essentially that communities that have higher income housing or a high income, high opportunity areas, they're going to get a higher amount of VLI, very low income and low income housing as in allocation. So that, those are factors that all need to be factored into the whole Rina discussion. At the, I believe it was the March, March meeting, HMC meeting, there were three potential methodology options that were, actually, there were five that were kind of looked at by the HMC. And then these three, the housing jobs crescent code red to address housing need and the balanced equity jobs and transportation methodologies ranked the highest. And it was a breakdown in terms of how they addressed each of those. It also gets the factors in here. So they weighted fifty percent on equity, forty percent on jobs and ten percent on transit for the housing jobs crescent, sixty percent equity, twenty percent jobs, ten percent transit, ten percent hazards for code red to address housing need. And then basically they're, they're playing with the different weights to see how this translates into the different Rina numbers. And they polled the HMC and the public on their preferences and their ranking in each of these methodologies. So the housing to job, housing jobs crescent ranked the highest for the HMC members down to balanced equity jobs and transportation. On the other hand, for the public, the balanced equity jobs, transportation ranked the highest and the housing jobs crescent ranked the lowest. So moving on, we essentially applied these factors to the tool that A Bag and MTC have. And as you can see, they, this generated, we generated the numbers from the tool in this table here, which reflect the total housing units for Cupertino, jumping from, from forty-four thirteen at the baseline to sixty-four fourteen for the code red to address housing needs, to fifty-nine oh seven with the balanced equity jobs, transportation, and fifty-five ninety-one for the housing jobs crescent. And so these percent increases are as, as it pertains to the baseline estimate. We also did a comparison with other jurisdictions just to see where these, how it, these different methodologies impact the other jurisdictions and essentially, you know, every, the differences in the different jurisdictions, just based on the different factors that were applied in each of those methodologies. With regard to the Rina process timeline, in the summer of two thousand twenty, we're expecting the regional housing needs determination. In the fall, there's going to be a proposed Rina methodology. And then in winter, there's going to be a draft Rina methodology to that is going to be sent to ECD. In the spring of two thousand twenty-one, there'll be a final Rina methodology and draft allocations will be presented to the cities. During the summer of next year, there will be the Rina appeals process in which different local jurisdictions can appeal their Rina and determine, you know, make an argument to A Bag why their Rina should be lowered or increased. At the end of two thousand twenty-one, the final allocations will be presented to the cities. One important thing to be noticed in the Rina appeals process is that I believe that ECD can also appeal a city's Rina as well in this particular housing element cycle. And then cities must adopt their housing element by January two thousand twenty-three. And with that, I can turn it over to Erica if she has the definition of the divergence index in terms of how A Bag and MTC and I'm happy to answer any questions to the extent that I can. I'm learning a lot about this process myself.
Sure. So I could just really quickly answer the divergence index factor. So this is an index to calculate how different a jurisdiction's demographics are compared to the region as a whole. So more, the impact of this specific factor is that more units are allocated towards jurisdictions that have more segregation compared to the rest of the region. So it's my understanding that A Bag is using US Census data primarily. So then they do have in the footnote for the staff report, we do link a map. I can share it if anyone is interested.
Mr. Mayor, with that, we conclude our presentation.
Oh, okay. I thought we were going to see the map, but I guess not. Okay. Are you trying to share that map?
I'd be happy to share that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so this is.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I've seen this before.
And sorry, it's a little, it's a little cut off, but it's, it's much easier to view.
Right.
But this link is footnoted in, in the staff report. And it indicates, I believe that we highest one third. So sorry, it's a little hard to see.
That's fine. Okay. All right. So we can bring it back to council. I have, if we can go back to that map that showed the PDAs and the map around the city with the blue and can you bring that back up? That was in your presentation, Erica. Okay, so it sounds like we only have twelve more days to do anything about this and you know, one area that I notice where there's nothing is the whole Bub Road area. And, you know, I've, I've looked at that area a lot. I know there was a proposal for some housing once where the Measure X buildings now Apple buildings are. But there's a lot of obsolete, low rise, tilt up buildings. Some of them have already been abandoned. That area is also within the boundaries of schools that are experiencing declines in enrollment and some are in danger of closing. While some of the other areas are within the boundaries of schools that are currently impacted with too much enrollment. So I'm just wondering why that whole Bub Road area has been left out? Can anyone comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that this is based on proximity to transit and just in, one of the things that A Bag is looking at is to make sure that land use is connected to transit to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. I mean, that's the, the whole purpose of SB three seventy-five. It stems from eighty thirty-two, which was to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And as a result, that's where land use in transit tie. And so they've been trying to look at region or areas that have bus service, that have fast bus service and regions where, or areas where higher density development could occur. So that's the reason why they picked these particular geographies.
Okay, so we didn't pick them. A Bag picked them.
Correct. These are all picked by A Bag.
Okay. So they don't consider things like school impact and land availability. They just are looking at transportation only?
Correct. My understanding is under different state bills that once a development pays its how, school impact fees, that is considered full mitigation for their school impact. And so, yeah. And so as a result, when we look at land use decisions, it is my understanding that school impacts are fully mitigated by that. And as a result, they should not be factored into these decisions, but.
Right. Even though they're, even though, even though they're not mitigated by that, doesn't matter. So what if we expanded our, I know the twenty-three line used to continue past eighty-five. I think it went all the way to Foothill before and then as one of VTA's cutbacks, they ended it at Deans College. What if we provided our own bus service via VIA or something else in that area? Would that qualify under A Bag as transportation or does it have to be provided by VTA?
But again, I mean, the city can look to other regions outside of these regions if they wish to increase. However, it doesn't necessarily mean that A Bag will cut back on these particular regions. Because we have, we would have to hit a fifty percent mark in order to, so there's a threshold that, and Erica, maybe this is a good time to bring up the other map, is they, they identified what are PDA eligible areas. And they identified, you know, close to twenty-seven hundred acres, if I'm not mistaken, or just up north of that as PDA eligible. And we as a city would have to identify at least fifty percent of that in order for A Bag to not utilize these particular geographies. So if we identified any other areas outside of these as PDAs, if we don't hit that fifty percent threshold, we, they would still use these particular.
Wait, wait. Fifty percent of what?
Twenty, the PDA eligible areas. And Erica is going to bring up a map which indicates what the eligible areas are.
Q, would you be able to stop sharing your screen?
Sure.
Oh, Q, can you mute? There's a huge amount of noise coming from your house. So. Yeah, yeah. If you can mute yourself while she's doing this. Yeah, thank you. Oh, much better.
Okay, so this, I believe, is the map that Q was referring to. This is a map that A Bag put out of all of our PDA eligible areas. This map, it goes along with A Bag's PDA eligible spreadsheet. Sorry. So this is where we're getting those acreages from.
Oh, so go back to the map for a second. So that yellow and purple that actually do extend out to Bub Road, that doesn't mean that those areas are eligible?
No, so those areas are eligible. Are, are you asking why they were not shown on the?
Well, yeah, I just wonder because that, there's so much land there that would be appropriate for housing. I just wonder why they've never been identified.
And I, I think that's something that Q was mentioning that, you know, through A Bag and MTC, they're giving jurisdictions a second opportunity to locally nominate PDA areas. So, you know, it could be council's decision to nominate additional areas in addition to the existing PDA that we have along Stevens Creek and North Deans. What Q was mentioning with the fifty percent target is that if, if we do not want to be subject to the map with the maroon teal and light blue, then we would need to designate at least fifty percent of Cupertino's.
Right, right. Yeah, we got that. I just want, so.
And, and.
So, so.
You'd be able to designate.
Yeah, the point, the point is, what I said earlier is that area along Bub is eligible. It just was not shown in the other map. Well, yeah, it touches it. It actually goes, it actually goes beyond it. But anyway. Yeah, it goes on to Imperial in some places and Imperial's another area where there could. And Imperial's another area where there could be, uh, there's all those, um,
Right.
Auto, auto shops.
Right, the auto shops and all, you know, intermixed, intermixed with some new housing. That's another area. Because I'm thinking of, you know, the school districts and threatening to close schools in that area because of under enrollment. And yet we're trying to put all the housing in areas where the schools are already impacted. It just, uh, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I, I agree with you, Stephen. I, I think, you know, that corridor above Road, which is currently single-story Class B office. I mean, we thought about it maybe being low-rent office for, you know, new companies, but I think that given our, our housing situation, it would, my understanding is a PDA can be nominated by a city. So we could, I think in a letter, my guess is, city staff helped me out here, but I think in, in any letter we could address to A Bag, we could nominate that Bub Road corridor as, as an extension of the PDA. And frankly, right from where I'm coming, I, I would love to see a transit project on 85. We fought for it in 2014 and 2015. We got funding in 2016 and anything we can do to help anchor the area around Deans College is a a transit hub with a transit stop, I think, would help. And this would, this would add to the, you know, potential utility of transit service at that overpass.
Yeah. And I think some of those property owners might be thrilled because now, you know, they can't build high-rise buildings there. And a lot of those buildings are empty. They may be leased but not be being used because Apple's got a bunch of them. I used to work in two of those, two of those buildings there and the, you know, they were pretty awful buildings back in the 1980s and now they're probably even more awful. So I think that's something we should definitely look into. And, uh, yeah, that's all I have on that. Other council members that wish to weigh in?
On, on this particular map, you know, I, I sure, sure would like to understand this better. You know, at the 280, 85 interchange there, I mean, when we're talking about being located next to transit, I mean, that is the, you know, high hub that we've got and yet it's not colored in at all. Making, and yet here they are going down Stevens Creek and Wolf Road. I, are, you know, there, it sure looks like their understanding of transit is buses as opposed to, uh, you know, vehicular traffic of any way, shape or form.
Exactly, John. Yeah. Their, their definition of transit is not cars. There is no transit on 85 and 280 at all.
They're looking primarily at public transit.
Right. And this is all pre-COVID-19, right? They're, they haven't changed anything in reaction to what's gonna happen with public transit or the excerpts. So this is really, I mean, they really need to go back and redo all of this, but obviously they're not gonna do that.
I know that they are taking COVID into consideration, but in terms of, you know, economic booms and busts and then the public health aspect of it, but I think that they are definitely paying more to that now.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you, John, but, um, right, just wanted to point out that, yeah, they're not looking at car transit. And that's what, that's why that area is not colored in.
And so on Lawrence Expressway, you know, all around the Kaiser, not that there's anything undeveloped there, but you know, the Apple buses, the Google buses, I mean, they're up and down Lawrence Expressway. Are they also not considered transit?
No, the, the definition of transit is public transit with headways of less than 15 minutes or public transit between, with headways between 16 and 30 minutes. So that's their definition of what transit is.
Okay, I see some others that have their hand raised. Councilmember Chow. And then Rod again. Okay. Liang?
I'm muted. Okay. So am I, okay. So first, so I'd like to understand the divergence index more. What's the intent? So they only measure the racial distribution, not even income? So somehow they expect all, every city is as equally racially have the same racial composition as the entire county or the region or night county? How do they define that?
I believe it's, oh, go ahead, Hugh.
No, go ahead, Erica. Go ahead.
Oh, um, I believe that it's more than just the racial divergence, but I, I was just gonna say that I'd be happy to look into that, but unless, unless you-
I, I just wanted to add something that they are looking at sensitivity to that as well. They're, they're, what they're trying to do is figure out whether there is a, how can they tie the divergence index income? Yes, so they are looking at that. So they're trying to figure out there is more coming to that. They're gonna nuance these factors a little bit more and they're gonna be weighted on different, like I said, the divergence index alone will not indicate what Cupertino's Reno will be, but it could be weighted with a 5% weightage, for example, versus, but they are looking to fine-tune these factors still. So this is not-
So the reason they are considering this as a factor is they think if they add more units in Cupertino somehow non, non-Asian are going to move in? That's going to change our composition somehow, but that's not going to be the case. It will be the same composition of people who are going to move in because people tend to choose where they live because maybe this area has more Chinese grocery, Indian grocery, and that's tend to attract-
I, I think it's, it's income, it's income, not race.
No, right now it's just race.
It, it is, it is race-based right now with census data. Yes, but they are gonna tie it to income as well. And that is something that as a matter of fact, there was a, a HMC workshop just this past week and was one of the things that staff raised with them because we were considering cities such as Smokey Dus or Cupertino where these decisions are made by choice, not necessarily as a result of income. So they, but they are, like I said, that, that's something that we are looking to-
Yeah, since they should not consider race at all. If they want, they should just consider income only.
There, there are other communities-
People tend to congregate, people with culture.
And there are other-
That's the best thing.
Yeah, the, and it, it's, it's how they weighted again, because there are certain other communities where that could be an income-based decision. But again, yes, that's something that we've already brought up with A Bag.
And then another thing is, okay, they are using this to determine the number of housing units. Is there any evidence that if you add more housing unit in an area that says more high income, are they going to have more high-income people concentrated on more high-income area that make the income even higher?
This is-
These are going to be more expensive, right? Market rate, new multi-b buildings are more expensive unless you build more than 50% of, or you build 100% of BMR units. Otherwise, you're just looking at making the income even higher with more units.
And that's something that is, there are, there, I guess there are two schools of thought on it. One is to increase demand, uh, I'm sorry, to increase supply quite a, by quite a bit, which will make the, you know, the prices go down. That's one school of thought. And so that's, my guess is that's where they're coming from, is where the, both the state and A Bag, at this point, we have to accommodate whatever the state provides down and there has to be a way to divide that up.
But for cities like Cupertino, more units simply means more people from other cities are going to want to move in. There, there's a limited demand because more people want to be closer to jobs. And we are just going to stock up all the housing. So many other cities at the boundary are going to lose population. With housing prices not going to come down.
But Liang, it doesn't matter if it makes sense or not. This is what they're doing.
Yeah, this is what they are doing. It's, it's just, it has to make sense. It doesn't.
No, it doesn't have to make sense. That's where you're wrong.
So access to high opportunity, how do they measure that percentage? So they have some metrics for that. How do they-
So the, um, my, again, like I said, I'm learning a lot very fast this thing too.
Oh, by the way, thank you for very, very good staff report. You summarized such complicated stuff topic in short time, but then was so clearly. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So my understanding is that the Turner, Turner, yes, the Turner Center in Berkeley has worked with the Tax Credit Allocation Committee. And they have come up with certain calculations and a map that determines what are high resource and high opportunity areas in the entire Bay Area. And that is, HCD actually has a definition for it and we kind of put it in the presentation and I'm happy to bring that up as well. It is, let me see, I'm gonna read off of it because there was, I wanted to make sure that was in here. It basically says places that offer the best chance at economic advancement, high educational attainment and good physical and mental health. That was the definition from HCD. So in essence, I believe they looked at school scores. They looked at housing prices and income levels. And then they kind of looked at, you know, how, how much of the population has a higher degree of education. They kind of factored in a lot of different things from the census data. And they developed this map that has, that identifies high resource areas across the Bay Area. And so that's where this comes from.
So there is, so it's determined by school score, not really actually by school resource. For example, Cupertino Union is the lowest funded school in the entire California. Although the student scores are high, that's maybe because a lot of parents are paying for a lot of after-school classes to bring up the test scores. That means extra housing units, people coming into Cupertino, unless you can afford all these, all those extra instructions, you are probably not going to get the best education because funding per student here is half of funding per student in Elmwood, in, in, in Alum Rock. And then even I heard in, during COVID-19, Cupertino Union gets maybe like $5 per student while other schools, they get $200 per student.
Uh, nineteen, nineteen dollars, nineteen.
Dollars, yeah.
Compared to 600 other, but again,
Yeah.
It's all, it doesn't matter that it makes no sense. But what it should be-
Funding.
But what it should be based on is not important. It's what A Bag decides.
So can we provide comment to them that this high resource area should be based on public funded resources? So that future residents who move in will not be unfairly disadvantaged than other residents because they will be among people who are receiving actually very little public funding because of the public policy that's providing more funding to areas where with lower performance.
So let, let me say in Cities Association, the person from Los Altos, Nisa, I asked her this explicit thing and apparently originally they were going to base this on school funding and apparently they probably looked at Cupertino and said, wait a minute, that's, that's gonna reduce the number. Original, this is what I believe Nisa said. Originally they did and then they decided to go and look at test scores instead.
Then at least we should write a letter to, to object to this kind of designation of high resource area. Because people don't know Cupertino actually is having a lot of problem with that. Okay. So in terms of decision from May 31st, so are we, are we still allowed to propose a new PDA that's-
Yes. So the, the city can certainly nominate a new PDA.
It's not 50% of the eligible area.
Correct, which means that it won't change the rural geographies that, that is my understanding. That doesn't change the rural geographies that have already been adopted. So unless you hit the 50% mark, they, they won't change the geographies that have already-
It will just add to what that's already there. Okay. So then another question is what this geography will be used for? It's just a model. We can use this for analysis. Then what's going to come? What would this, uh, and in the end, when we need to designate, designate housing element site, a site that's in this map versus a site that's not, what would be the difference?
Well, like we point out in the staff report, I mean, SB 375 specifically says that the city's general plan doesn't have to be completely in coherence with what the regional plan is. And so when we come upon, when, once our regional housing needs allocation is given to us, we can, as a, you know, city can decide where it puts its housing and it doesn't necessarily have to be in the areas that were identified in blue and teal.
Oh, that's good to know. So this is, even if an area that's not identified in this map, they have now or anything we add. But if someone wants to develop or that's a good site, we can still add that in our housing element.
Correct.
Would there be any penalty or they won't be able to use fitness or any other thing for that project?
There, uh, no, not for that project itself, but if there were any, my understanding again is that if there was any grant funding opportunity in a, in, in that part where we now allocated or designated for housing, there may be reason for that grant funding not to be granted, but that grant not to be granted to the city.
So maybe the grant is depending on bus service.
Correct.
So there might be- New bus service might be allocated near that area or in 16 bus service might be canceled.
That's, that's up to VTA.
Yeah. And that's a key thing that Liang raised is this all is about the bus service at that instant in time. I mean, VTA has been reducing bus service extensively over the years, especially in Cupertino. But going back, so I guess I'm not clear. There were two maps. There was the one with the blue PDA areas. And then there's the other one where certain areas like Bub would qualify for a PDA area because they're within that bubble or whatever you want to call it, but are not considered PDAs because, because why? Because Cupertino didn't want to or because A Bag didn't want to?
Uh, so the PDA that we have is an existing PDA. It was a VTA Corors Corridors PDA that was kind of
Okay.
Into the city's general plan of sorts. But the, um, the Bub area is within walking distance of a, you know, within a mile of a certain bus stop.
Yeah.
And as a result, if you, if you look closely at the map, it kind of just shows it's, it's a lighter color. It's
Right.
Out of boundary of it, of sorts.
It is, right.
And so, um, from a, from a practical perspective, you know, can, can the city designate it as a new PDA? Certainly.
Will it, can we do that before May 19th? I mean, more May 30th?
No, it doesn't. So we can, as long as it's agendized before and a resolution is adopted by the council before June 30th, that can be moved forward as a new PDA, but it won't change any of the blue and teal. That's, that's my understanding is. So the blue and teal map still stays the same. This would be in addition to that. In my opinion, it might just increase the amount of area that Cupertino has for accommodating more arena, but that's, you know, a decision.
Right. I mean, our goal is not to increase it, but to be able to put it in the most appropriate place without increasing it. So how do we accommodate that?
Public company.
But can you let her answer, please?
Okay. So that might be something that the council could look to do with its housing element update is when they decided, when they decide to cite the housing sites, that's when they can look and put in, uh, put it in any place outside of the blue and-
So, so to just to put a finer point on this, Hugh, then the way that that PDA map designates the areas does not mean, it, it doesn't limit council from designating housing element sites in the future. from designating housing element sites in the future. And nor does it limit them if they don't designate Bub Road, for example, now as a PDA.
That is my understanding and we can certainly go back and talk to A Bag staff about what would happen if we do decide to add something as a PDA, does it mean? My my understanding right now, based on all the research I've done, is unless you hit the fifty percent mark, it doesn't change those rural geographies that they've identified, the blue stuff.
I think what they're interested in, if I if I characterize what council is asking at this point is if they establish an additional PDA down Bub Road, does that jeopardize them in any way in terms of yet more numbers? Or can we just go about our business, establish the housing element sites uh in the next work program? Um, because it doesn't really limit them just because it's not on the PDA map.
And that's something I'm happy to uh talk, that's not an answer I have off the.
Well, yeah, please, we do, yeah, we desperately need to know that quickly.
So why do an extra, the question, the question is, why do an extra step? If all they have to do is establish their housing elements where they want.
Right, exactly. That's a good point.
That, yep, understood. And we can, we're happy to bring that answer back.
Okay, Rod, you have your hand up.
Oh, I do again. Well, yeah, so I I just wanna, I wanna reinforce this idea that you know, I and I said it before, so I'll be very brief, but I I think um Bub Road would be a great idea and whether or not it might bring more housing units or not, I think it also increases the likelihood that we could um help build support for uh transit in the eighty five corridor. You may know that the eighty five PAB is um after three years of activity uh is scheduled this year to make a recommendation of a full VTA board. We have funding in uh Measure B twenty sixteen. Uh, my hope is um we can get support from enough cities on the corridor to uh make a positive recommendation to uh the VTA board. And that the VTA board, having now celebrated uh the the pending opening of uh Bart uh will will recognize that it would be time to make an investment, albeit of a a relatively minor one in in the West Valley. I mean, we desperately need help. We have the Enza College, which is a major transit um a customer. It's it's professors, it's faculty, it's staff, it's students. So we really need to do something and and to me, right? Uh, our putting our hand up would be uh nominating this for PDA, even if we don't get formal credit through the allocation process, would give us an opportunity to say proactively that we are interested in uh considering new areas of the city to build housing where we haven't before. Um, and and that we want to, dear MTC, we we want to, you know, qualify for transit in this corridor and we're willing to do what it takes to uh make that hub um uh a potent stop uh in a transit uh network that we want to be a part of. Thank you.
All right, before we go to the public, uh Darcy, did you have anything?
I don't really have much. I mean, I I I do have a couple of topics. So looking at this uh this Valco project that we have right now on the SB thirty five um entitlements, uh our current Rena allocation is somewhere on the order of a thousand something. There are twelve hundred uh low market rate units uh on this project. Are we going to be able to get credit in a future Rena cycle uh for for those units if it turns out to be the project that is uh delivered by the applicant? That's my first question.
My understanding is that, well, based on my understanding from the last Rena cycle, that there are no transfers of credits between different Rena cycles. So it just depends on when the permits are issued.
Okay, and let me get into my my second question then. Um, when the permits are issued, now are you saying that if the permits then become issued uh a year and a half out from now, then that then goes to the next Rena cycle? Or would it have to be twenty twenty three until twenty twenty thirty? Is that is that the next?
So again, my understanding is that there's something called a production period uh and and um that production period, I believe, starts in uh June of twenty twenty two. So any permits issued after June of twenty twenty two uh up until December of twenty twenty two will get credited for the next Rena cycle.
I see, I see. So that's that's building permits, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then at what point in the cycle for a project like that one would building permits likely be pulled?
Um, it it they're all by building. My my understanding is that they're different buildings that the um affordable housing is linked to. So it just depends on at what point each building permit is pulled for each building.
I see. Okay, well, that's um, it's good to know. Um, uh, one thing I would like to uh get as a as a requested follow up. If we could, we often hear about our performance. It's a fact that it's 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 not, it's not worse than median. Is there any way that we can get some numbers with regard to how we're doing for delivery of our Rena allocation on a, not just a a local basis, but a statewide basis? So that we can have uh tho- that data uh at our fingertips when we need to evaluate it and assess it? Is that something that's readily available?
So funny you ask. I have a slide that shows the Rena production of all the uh, well, most of the, all the cities almost in the South Bay in Santa Clara County. Uh, but uh there is a large spreadsheet that uh the HCD has that indicates uh the production for the entire state. And um uh I'm happy to provide a link to that. It's just the HCD's housing element website. And there's a link in there that basically talks about tracking um the other um cities as well, so for the entire state. And uh it presents it as, you know, it's quite in detail. It basically pulls data from the annual progress reports that cities have to file. And so it indicates all the arena by income level, how many permits are issued by each income level, the percentages, and then what are deed restricted or not. So it kind of breaks it down pretty well. And I'm happy to wish to see, I'm happy to pull up the uh table that I had for the um Santa Clara County.
Sure, I I just think we should have that eye on being able to uh take advantage of those numbers because they are quite significant, whether they're allocated in this cycle. Um, and we can then say, look, we've actually oversupplied with regard to our uh Rena allocations for the current cycle, you should in some fashion take that into account when you're considering our future numbers. Or if it's a matter of um the permits being pulled in such uh at such a time that they get applied to the next cycle, which would be, I think, self explanatory. But but I would like, if if um you could, to uh ask if you you can think of ways of um letting those numbers assist us if in fact those building permits get applied in this particular cycle. Um, especially, I mean, especially for those one thousand two hundred and one units of low market rate housing. Uh, because I I think that would put us at the very top of the um uh uh of the list with regard to the cities that have been able to allocate not just their uh their numbers, but their numbers of uh low and very low income housing uh units. Is that, those numbers must be very, very low throughout the state.
So Darcy, if I understand the way it works correctly, you know, your next Rena cycle, your number would be lower if you've actually produced the housing you said you would, but you don't. Right, you can't transfer it between cycles. And the fact that we've approved it or it's been approved ministerially has no effect if it hasn't been built. Um, so it's almost like we wouldn't get that credit for producing those twelve hundred one units until the next cycle after the next cycle, because then they would say, oh, look, you've finally produced that. Now you have to produce less in the next cycle. Um, so I I understand where you're going, but I don't think that's gonna actually help us now.
Yeah, I I I'll weigh in on this too. I, our Darcy's question is really important for us to understand um. And I I asked this question of city staff earlier, if you if you could help us sort out the timing of Valco with respect to what credit we could get. Is it based on permits pulled or is it based on actual construction fulfilled? You know, if if it's done by such and such a date, um, and then how long does the entitlement for thirty five go, right? With respect to that, do they have to pull permits in order to construct by a certain date? This would all be quite material to, you know, frankly, whether we're looking at if in round numbers, we're asked to produce six thousand in the next cycle, six thousand housing units, that's a heck of a big number. If that gets, if that gets uh buffered by, uh if we get a credit of of twenty four hundred, um you know, that that would, that would make it easier, obviously, right? Uh, so so, you know, it it staff, I I guess my my understanding is staff has to do some more homework to help explain these things. But I think understanding the timing of all of this and how um it impacts our Rena in this cycle and the next would be would be valuable for the entire community. Thanks.
I believe there's a timeline being built as well, so you can understand all of that.
Yeah, I mean, my my point is basically that we should try to optimize our advantage on it because it is a very significant number of uh housing units, if in fact it is the project that goes forward. Um, and um, you know, irrespective of whether it goes in this cycle or the next cycle, uh, there there are um, there there are things that we can be doing going forward to try to uh make the argument, uh, for instance, if it's in this cycle that, look, you know, we've we've not only made the numbers, we're probably one of only a very small handful of jurisdictions that managed to deliver the very low income and the low income units uh in accordance to what the Rena requirements are. And I mean, just to, just to remind everyone, in the Valco site, we only assigned four hundred units, so that's four hundred units total. So if we end up delivering not just uh the twelve hundred and one units of BMR housing, but double that amount if you include the market rate, but just in the twelve hundred and one uh BMR units alone, we are covering the entirety of our uh Rena allocation for the cycle twenty uh fourteen to twenty twenty two. Uh, then I think it's it's very clear that we should be thinking about how do we uh use that, I mean, not just as a PR mechanism, of course, but you know, just uh for for practical uh equity and fairness purposes, uh get out there and say, hey, look, you know, we have met this. Um, the the information was completely wrong as to uh what people were saying about our jurisdiction. Now, how can we um, you know, use that information going forward into the next immediate cycle? So so I would encourage our staff, because I I know that our staff in the past uh for the um Community Development Department, the Planning Department uh have had those conversations within their um professional community. And, you know, just um, just do the outreach, you know, please do the outreach and you know, let people know that that's something that we're keeping an eye on.
All right, great. Um, I would like to go to the public now. Seeing no more, uh I see two people with their hands raised, three people now. Let's start with Rahul. You've had your hand raised for the longest time. Welcome, Rahul. Unmute. Trying to unmute you here. I don't know why. Okay, there it goes. Welcome, Rahul.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, council members and city staff, I'm speaking only for myself and reading from portions of a letter sent by the West Bay Citizens Coalition. We urgently request that Cupertino take immediate action to stop MTC and A Bag from continuing with the Plan Bay Area twenty fifty process until they follow the legally required mandate to address publicly the huge and growing jobs, housing imbalances in the six cities of Silicon Valley. And if MTC and A Bag refuse to work with you, you won't have a choice but to refuse to accept the Rena allocations that are assigned. In the midst of the unprecedented COVID nineteen lockdown with all its disastrous consequences, some of which will significantly impact future planning for the region, MTC and A Bag is nonetheless rushing ahead to assign Rena numbers to our cities this summer. Most importantly, the Rena allocations for Cupertino are being derived from their aggressive jobs and housing forecasts in priority development areas without genuine input from the affected communities. It is based on an in-house model that is driven by job, by exaggerated jobs growth in already jobs-rich areas. It's a model that's proven wrong time and time again. We believe it's imperative that you contact MTC and A Bag and insist that they stop action on Plan Bay Area twenty fifty until, one, the shelter-in-place order is completely lifted and we fully understand the impacts of the pandemic on the future of the region. And two, that there's been an opportunity for full community participation in the planning process and the resulting model. The current Plan Bay Area process has completely failed to prevent the current massive intraregional imbalances in the cities of the West Bay, particularly Silicon Valley. These exaggerated imbalances have caused severe problems throughout the Bay Area, including escalating land costs and the highest housing costs in the country, an annual double-digit increase in traffic congestion with our streets and highways beyond reasonable capacity, growing wealth inequality, dislocation of families, especially those with young children, and imposition of significant lifestyle changes on residents. Increasingly, citizens in the West Bay are demanding to understand the full impacts of new policies and to know the costs of full mitigation. The global COVID nineteen pandemic has and will continue to affect planning profoundly. Many of Plan Bay Area twenty fifty's assumptions need to be rethought. Please do not let unelected agencies like MTC and A Bag and special interest groups usurp your rightful roles as the focus and driving influence of effective and balanced zoning and spending decisions. Thank you.
Let me unmute. Thank you, Rahul. Yes, you raised some good points there, especially they seem to be predicting a level of job growth that probably is not going to happen because our council has not been approving new office buildings unlike San Jose, Santa Clara, um Mountain View. Um, well, the only real one is the SB thirty five, which does have a huge jobs uh housing imbalance, but that's part of that law. We can't do anything about it. So appreciate your comments. Uh, next we'll go to um Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa. Unmute you, okay. Are you there, Lisa? I keep unmuting her, but it's not working. Okay, there you go. Welcome, Lisa. You have three minutes.
So I won't take that long. I just want to say yahoo, Rahul, because I really appreciate you reading that letter and potentially helping to write it, and I think it's right on. Even without the COVID comments, the initial part of the letter made sense. And the fact that it identifies unelected people making these decisions. We have enough issues with our elected people. We certainly don't need unelected people in a small group that are now taking taking over two different things and combining them, which in some ways may make sense, but not when you've got the people involved. So I highly encourage you to do what Rahul just requested. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Thank you for being brief. Next we'll go to Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Um.
Whoops, hold on, let me.
Hello.
Okay, go go ahead, start over.
Yes, uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, this is Jennifer Griffin and um staff did an excellent presentation. This is a very complicated uh subject and I'm glad you all were able to um give a clear interpretation of it. Um, I'm just gonna say right now that it it seems like the people that are backing and sending the Scott Wiener, I won't pick on poor Scott, but the big housing bills, um that those are the same people that are on the MTC and the A Bag boards. I mean, we hear the same rhetoric over and over again. Scott Wiener is trying to take over the land one quarter mile from a bus stop on Stevens Creek Boulevard, which involves my house. I hear that ongoing with every single SB fifty and SB, what, three thirty? I know that was Skinner's bill. The the iteration eight twenty seven. And it's like, okay, that was two to three years ago. Your house has threatened to be take over and have somebody build a multi-story building on it a quarter mile from a bus stop. And now we're getting that from A Bag and the MTC. Well, it's the same rhetoric rhetoric. Do they think that we don't understand? I I I've also, my question is that the part where they have said, whatever that PDA. The part where they have said, uh whatever that PDA is along Bollinger Road from Lawrence. Um back to uh, I guess it's Highway nine. Does anybody really? That is also the Bollinger Urban Village for San Jose. Which we've, it's Lawrence and Bollinger is a an urban village, which means that you can do. Two hundred feet high all the way along Bollinger Road. Does that mean that the Cupertino part of that is one quarter mile in? Because you've got a Lutheran church there um near Lawrence and 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 Bollinger. Does that mean that they're going to build high-density housing on top of a Lutheran church? I mean, and also too, the part about the map that they had about Stevens Creek Boulevard. They've got sections in there that in it's my area again. What 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 is to give? Let's take over San Francisco and start planning a quarter mile from their bus stop. But yes, and I can tell you in twenty ten, twenty thirteen, when we went through this before. Um A-BAG was trying to do uh Bay Area Plan twenty forty. It was a disaster. A-BAG had come up with like four thousand housing units in in twenty twelve. The unemployment rate was twelve percent because we had the the crash in twenty ten. A-BAG was completely out of it. They don't change their numbers. So as Lisa and Rahul said, the A-BAG needs to go back and take COVID into account. But yes, this is. I'm gonna just say, I'm really getting tired of this ridiculous nonsense. The public has a right to know. It's our tax dollars supporting these buffoons. And I'm really getting annoyed that we have people that are on these boards. That don't seem to have a clue about how cities are run. Well, I'm sorry, they're not taking over our cities. And they're not, nobody's gonna build something on my house.
Hey, finish up, you're over three minutes.
A quarter mile from a bus stop. It has to stop. Let's get responsible. Let's get rid of the MTC and A-BAG. It's a joke. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Next we will go to um Terry Holsmur. Welcome, Terry. Oh, wait. I said, it's not letting me unmute you because it says you're using an older version of Zoom. Choose promote to panelist. Okay, hold on. I'm not sure how I do this. Well, I can't, I can't do it. Um. Okay. Let me see, who is um six, five, zero? Zero, zero, two, eight. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. Um, this is uh Lydia Koo, City Council Member of Palo Alto, um speaking on my own behalf. Um, I just want to say thank you so much to the City of Cupertino for your um. Study session on this matter with A-BAG and its growth geographic region as well as their Rena. Uh allocations. It is um, it's pretty disturbing. And the gentleman who spoke earlier, Rahul, said it all. Said it all. So thank you so much because I'm learning a lot through your study session. Uh unfortunately, my city is not having one, so um just wanted to reach out and say thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Lydia, for calling in. Always good to hear from uh our friends over in Palo Alto. Um, next, I've got Kitty Moore. Welcome, Kitty. Well, okay, Kitty, you're on.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Scharf. Um, well, first, I'm I'm shocked to hear that Palo Alto is not having a study session on the Rena numbers. That's. That's pretty shocking. Um, so I'm looking at the Arena Factor Sensitivity Analysis Table. And I'm hoping that we can be provided with the definitions. Um. So this is a table that has divergence index. Uh but my issue is that there's there seems to be some redundancy because you have uh jobs-to-housing fit. Jobs-to-housing balance, which they seem to be redundant, or you have some overlap. And uh, you know, let me add that I'm representing myself only. Uh and then we have jobs proximity to transit. And transit connectivity, those end up being uh numbers which are subtracted. So if if the public could be provided definitions for these terms and have some idea for how they made these. Uh calculations, um that would be very helpful. And I just want to. Add, since it was mentioned, the twenty four hundred and two units at Valco, that we are currently then entitled. Uh around three thousand five hundred if the two hundred and ninety-four units at Westport um. Come to fruition. I just want to bring that up, that we have this many units and it sounds like they're. If they are permitted before the next cycle, that they're not going to be helping us at all, is my understanding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kitty. Uh next we have Lynette Lee Ng. Welcome, Councilmember Ng.
Um, hi, this is Lynette Lee Ng, Councilmember with Los Altos. Um, thank you, Mayor Scharf and. Um. Cupertino Councilmembers, you're doing a wonderful job. Um, I think it's a great thing that you're doing to have this study session so that the public can be aware. Of what's happening and get educated on what we should be aware of. Um, I really think that this is um taking the step forward and I hope that. Your neighboring cities such as Los Altos would also follow in your footsteps. And also have a study session because I think it's important for our residents to learn about. What's going on and what we should be aware of. So thank you for all that you're doing. And then the first speaker that spoke and read that letter. I think he raised some excellent points. I'm going to carry those thoughts back to my council as well. And I hope you consider um the recommendations that was put forward. In raising some concerns to MTC and A-BAG, and I hope you will um perhaps send in a letter as well. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Lynette. Um, I think I've got phone number ending in zero, six, seven, four. Did you already speak or not? Welcome.
Uh, yes, this is Terry Holsmur, who uh tried to get on earlier.
Oh, okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I first wanted to just take a moment and thank the council for this very important topic. Because this does affect thousands of residents throughout, not only Cupertino, but throughout the entire region. And I think that this has largely gone under the radar, unfortunately, due to the crisis that's going on. But I would like to see that the council support the effort to notify MTC slash A-BAG. Which is really, again, an unelected body that um. That um is trying, is not solving a problem that truly we we need to solve, which is the jobs, housing imbalance. Unfortunately, the job growth-based model, which does not include real community involvement. Will only make the situation worse, not better, and that will affect all the communities throughout this region. It's important to send a letter outlining these facts and these details to them. At A-BAG and how they violated its state codes. Fi- finally, I'd just like to add in that the impacts of COVID have not really been added into the the. Into this process at all, this Plan Bay Area. Basically, they are ignoring these impacts. Impacts that, for example, will will impact this region for for years and years to come. Already businesses like Apple are are planning for fewer workers on a daily basis at their headquarters. Many people are going to be working from home. And these need to be taken into account and researched. Before any of this um Plan Bay Area twenty fifty goes forward. So I would encourage you that you remind this unelected body. That there are elected officials like yourselves who care about their communities. And want to see them truly represented in this process. So thank you very much, and I hope that you all support these ideas. Thank you.
Great, thank you for calling in. Um, okay, so I don't see any more hands raised from attendees. Um, are there any other panelists that? Wish to speak here? If not, I think, uh, is there anything else that anyone wants to say regarding the study session? Otherwise, we will. Um.
Yeah. Yes. Quick comment.
Welcome, Darcy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so going back to our Rena factor impacts, there's no need to share a screen or anything. Uh, the divergence index has us increasing by thirty eight sixty seven. I just want to point out, I I I don't want us to get too much of a promotion, but the total units should not be. Uh eighty-eight twenty based on that. It should be eighty-two eighty uh first off, so just a clerical thing. Well, let's get that fixed. Um, the other thing, the other comment I want to make is that. You know, this this really unfortunately, the way we look at this is creating a real disincentive. For a lot of communities, uh frankly, uh to create really effective mass transit across the board. And it's something that we so sorely need. We've needed it for a generation. We haven't gotten it right. And if we're gonna do this and allocate it in accordance to what our populations are, that seems pretty fair. And then just to put the thumb on the scale and basically say, look, if you have. Then we're gonna put more numbers here, and then if you don't, actually, you have a diminishment of your numbers. I mean, that that really does create a severe disincentive. And and so. I mean, it's it's a comment that I would make, and I I hope people think about it. And go, well, you know, mass transit is important enough. Uh for our future and for our present, such that we don't want to, you know, create these. Uh unintended consequences of cities not wanting to put it in to their cities because they'll have just more of these. Uh housing uh numbers imposed upon them as a as a mandate. So that that was my comment, so thank you.
So that is a valid point, but I would also point out that. Because their definition of mass transit is so weak, you know, a very slow bus every fifteen minutes that doesn't go between. Um, jobs-rich areas and housing-rich areas is defined as mass transit, so. Now amazingly, we have great mass transit in Cupertino if you listen to MTC and A-BAG. Even though we all know we don't.
Yeah, for the purposes of some of these uh upcoming legislation, uh I I mean, for Rena, you you know, it it seems to have. Um, better fit for the type of transit connectivity that you have. But I mean, point well taken. I mean. That becomes a disincentive based upon the current uh legislation and that being, you know, contemplated. For having any transit, uh mass transit whatsoever, which, you know, is 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 a bit. Is a bit upside down. I, you know. Will people their allocations based upon a fair proportion? Um, but. You know, don't don't.
Yeah. Yeah, you're correct. And, you know, the other issue with these Rena numbers um that they're giving to all the cities in California. They don't, I don't think. There's any expectation that these cities are going to be able to meet those crazy numbers. It's a lot of it is. Um, related to other legislation that says, oh, if you don't meet those numbers, now this thing happens. So. It's almost in, they're almost trying to make you not be able to meet the numbers. So other things happen, like the reduction in the percentage of affordable housing required under SB thirty five could go down to as low as ten percent. So. Um, yeah, it's. It it's depressing and frustrating, and I'm not sure what we can do about it. Uh, Liang, you had something to say?
Yeah, okay. So I see that um, oh, let me see. Okay. Let me share. So here's the, here is the index that they have. Now, I understand that if we perform well on this housing element cycle, supposedly. We should get. Credit and not be allocated as many units, right? But none of this index here give us credit for that. So is that being considered at all?
No, credit for what? We didn't produce, I mean, we.
I mean.
Entitled everything, but we didn't, we only produced nineteen units.
What I mean is none of this index. Is related to the performance of this housing element cycle.
Right.
Right. So is that being considered at all in determining the allocation for the next cycle?
Uh, no, the uh it is uh based on uh the housing need. That's it.
So it's based on housing needs. That means even if we don't build a lot of office. We will be penalized now because all the other cities are building house office like crazy. And then the job growth of the entire area goes up twenty per two percent, which is why. We will need to produce twenty-two percent more more housing units in eight years. So that's the model they are using, right? So we don't get credit for being a good citizen.
That, I believe, is a succinct explanation of it.
We don't get credit for building housing. We don't cred- don't get credit for not building office to worsen the situation. So we, they are encouraging everyone to just be bad citizen.
Right, I I think that's a good point. It's like, maybe, maybe we're being stupid for not building office because that generates so much revenue. And and we're not getting any benefit for having a good jobs, housing balance. You know, you have these bad actors in Sacramento that are doing this, and and it's, you know, it's not unintentional. People say, well, they don't realize. You know, what they're doing. Oh, they realize it all perfectly. It's not something that they don't realize.
A very, something doesn't make sense. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify one thing quickly.
Sure.
Um, on that list, you will find that future jobs does have an impact on the um the Rena numbers, and it actually has a negative job impact for Cupertino specifically. Because of have as much job growth in.
But not past jobs. They don't look at how much job we generated in the past eight years, say. And then use that to say we don't have to build that much units.
Right, and that may all kind of come uh into the baseline allocation eventually, because they might uh adjust the baseline itself to. Factor in past jobs, because none of this has been solidified yet. These are all.
So can we still make comments on how they do the index? Can we?
I don't think they're gonna change it at this stage.
That we can make comment that they should use past jobs production. And if they produced more jobs in the past eight years, they should get more units.
I think they're also taking into account. They may also be taking into account jobs, housing balance and jobs, housing fit. I I don't know if that.
Yeah, they have the job housing balance, but then it should be instead of future jobs. If you are, it should also be. Jobs produced in the past eight, in the last housing element cycle, in the past eight years, for example, then. Then those cities who produce more jobs should be building more housing, right?
Okay.
Or, yeah, okay. And another thing that I'd like to point out is in the Plan Bay Area memo. So here is, they say, for example, in the high resource area, which is uh within quarter mile of bus stop of. Up to thirty minutes head head period, head headways. And um they would be considering multifamily units in the form of. Uh, two-story tri or four-placks. And in the transit-rich area, they will be considering. Um, buildings of three to five-story buildings are envisioned. When they say envision, what does that mean? Would they force us to do certain things on the areas we submit? Or we still have the freedom?
Uh, no, the city still has the freedom to decide its urban form, as long as it's how many ever units they allocate us. So um, you know, we could fit six, you know, six thousand units on, let's say, a hundred acres, or you could fit six thousand units on five hundred.
So we still get to decide. That's good. But then what we are looking at right now is uh in the area. Okay, so this area that we have. Most likely. Um, this is maybe like a quarter. Percent of developed uh area in Cupertino or even less. But then we are looking at putting six thousand units. In that area for within eight years. So it may be like doubling the population of. This small area in eight years. How practical is that? Are they required to estimate how practical their? Are they required to estimate how practical their? No?
No.
And also, for example, when they allocate six thousand units, like when we have a thousand unit this, this, this cycle, and seven hundred fifty of them have to be below market rate, but only two hundred fifty will be market rate. That means only about fifteen percent of, of that two hundred fifty units can, can be compensated by market rate. The rest would have to be some kind of funding. Someone have to subsidize it. So for six thousand units, I have calculated that it will be, it will take nine billion dollars to subsidize all those BMR units just for Cupertino. So they don't even need to provide realistic funding level. Shouldn't they, they make projection, the need? Shouldn't they also take into account of the projected federal state funding level for below-market-rate units so that the city can have a real chance of, of having these new units?
Well, that's the other part of what A-Bag and MTC are trying to do is trying to raise money at a regional level in order to be able to fund some, a lot of the affordable housing that they're envisioning. But that's kind of, this all kind of stems from what the CASA impact, the CASA.
Compact.
Thank you. The CASA compact kind of came up with were different ways of kind of addressing the housing issue, which is from the policy side, from the legal side, and then from the funding side. So it kind of looked at it from different, uh, uh, different avenues. And this is the policy end of it, where they're looking to, how, how can more housing be accommodated within the region?
Yeah. But then when they do the Planned Bay Area analysis, all these analyses, don't they do economic fiscal analysis of how much subsidy of this below-market-rate units for the entire region? Six hundred sixty thousand units. How much percentage will be below market rate? How much could be, would actually need subsidies? And then what will be the total amount? Do they, that analysis?
That comes from the state. In essence, the state determines what the, the regional housing need determination is. They come up with a number. And A-Bag has to take the number and each of the cities has to distribute it.
Yeah, but then they should have a fiscal analysis on the fiscal impact to the area, right?
It's something that we can follow up on. I don't, I'm not particularly sure that they've looked at it down to that level of.
Yeah, can we come, add that to our comment letter so that push them to estimate the actual impact to all the cities? So that means impact on the money we need to build below-market rate, subsidize below-market rate housing, and the money we need to subsidize those schools. Because, yes, school impact is considered mitigated, but then it's not. Then that means taxpayers will still have to pay to build housing for maybe about six thousand students in an area that's already congested.
So just to back up a little bit, this.
We make that comment in our letter to A-Bag HCD.
So this, the Planned Bay Area, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, this is, I'm just trying to head off the conversation because we've got to get to the other heavy topics.
Right.
Okay. So I'm trying to get, just get the agenda back on track. This is a really deep topic, as you know, with lots of detail. And so if council chooses, staff can help draft some sort of letter to MTC slash A-Bag. And we'll take that offline.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We've already, already passed ten o'clock. So John, go really briefly and then we're done with this.
So should I, do I need second on the idea that we, I have proposed? Or?
This is a study session, so.
No, I mean the letter. What would be in the letter? So if no objection, I assume not everyone agrees. Okay, thank you.
Okay, John.
Yeah, so try and be real brief. I mean, when, when we sit here, you know, and go through all this material, thank you, city staff, for bringing it. You know, I, I echo our neighboring councilman, you know, for, you know, appreciating this. But when we look at what we've spent so much time discussing tonight, it's essentially, we're trying to, to create the intention, you know, the definitions. You know, what are they expecting us to do? What's my interpretation, your interpretation? How, how are we supposed to respond to such vague things as envisioned? So that being said, I mean, I just can't say that enough. Leads me to my next one. You know, the resident who read the letter, that was just so well-worded. You know, I would like to be suggesting that clearly we need to add a signature, a signature sheet to that letter and present it. Well, there's the suggestion, give it to A-Bag. But wait a minute, that's the source of the problem. I think we need to give that letter to our state senators and, you know, our, our other elected officials and drive this point home that, you know, we need, you know, to, to run this as a democracy, not as it's currently being done by paid officials that are easily influenced by special interests. So I definitely second what Councilman Chow said that we need to go ahead and present a letter. I would suggest we start with the one that we already have, adding a signature sheet to it, getting, you know, essentially presenting it to all the city councils of our neighboring cities and then taking that and handing it into our state senators for more hope in actually doing something. We can work on another letter that maybe further expands on what we see as some of the challenges of trying to do this. But in the interest of time, when we're talking about May thirty-first, June thirtieth, I think we should just take that letter, add the signature sheet and get it to our state senators and start meeting with them. And I'm definitely willing to get in the car and drive up to Sacramento and present it to them in person, get as many of us to do that in person. So that's, it, it's a study session, not an agenda item. But I agree, we should now move forward on this.
Myself. Okay, so I think we have, are done with the study session. No one else's hand is raised. So this will end the study session. Let me go back to the, uh, let's see, it's ten after ten. We've been going for two hours and forty minutes since the last break. So, um, yeah, let's reconvene at ten fifteen. If that's okay with everybody. And Liang, you can stop sharing your screen now.